Tonight is Wednesday, February 5th. This is 7:00 PM. We are at Ames School. This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting for District 96. Margie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsati.
Present.
Mr. Hunt.
Here.
Ms. Kleiber.
Here.
Mr. Marhol.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Muirhead.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Tonight, we have a Welcome to Ames by the school principal Todd Gierman.
Good evening, District 96 Board of Education. Superintendent Dr. Ryan Toye, welcome to Ames Elementary School. Always love hosting our meetings here at Ames. Gives me a chance to speak in front of the Board of Education and brag a little bit about our school. Wanted to share with you some really cool stuff going on at Ames. A few grade levels I want to touch upon and highlight. In 3rd grade, over the holidays, which wasn't too long ago, we had four parents come in and we actually had them volunteer to speak to our students about the holidays that they celebrate in their homes. So our parents came, we learned about Diwali, Vigalia, which is, I believe, Polish Christmas Eve. I don't know if I'm saying that right. Spell it with a W, but I believe, I just looked up the pronunciation, it's Vigalia. Hanukkah and St. Lucia Day. The parents presented on their own traditions, a little bit of the history of each of the holidays. Students got to participate in a Diwali dance. They heard a Hanukkah story, played dreidel, and they shared opelitek, which is a wafer from Vigalia, and even had the opportunity to try a St. Lucia treat. So it was really neat to bring those kind of cultures into our school. Great way to celebrate all the cultures in 3rd grade. 4th grade, our 4th grade teachers facilitate a morning meeting with their students each morning. They have student facilitators that actually run the meetings, which is really neat to see. They model a greeting, so it could be a handshake, it could be saying good morning in a different language. They do that every day. And then they lead a topic for everyone to briefly share. It allows students to really learn from each other. It fosters that positive climate and culture that we have in all of our classrooms in District 96. And then they participate in a short activity, which is usually a team-building activity. And I think morning meetings usually take about 5, 10 minutes tops, but it's a great way to start the day, and we have other grade levels doing that as well. And I wanted also to highlight 5th grade. Mrs. Seymour's 5th grade class participated in a rain barrel project, and I got to see this through with them. It was really cool to see what the kids were doing with this. It was a culminating project in their unit about water and conservation. The students got to work with groups on a STEM activity. The students were part of a team of manufacturers whose goal was to expand business and bring in more money. With the awareness that water conservation is an important issue in many regions across the US, they had to design a rain barrel with the eventual goal of manufacturing this for other people to purchase. These barrels needed to be environmentally safe, made from materials that wouldn't contaminate the water that they collect. They reached out to the head of the Public Works in the village of Riverside, Mr. Ed Bailey, which some of you may know, and he came in to speak to the class about their water management and flood control in our community. And then students presented the projects to Mr. Bailey, so their rain barrel projects, and it was sort of cute, they made, it was very cute. They made like infomercials, too, so they were trying to get you to buy their particular rain barrel, which is really neat. But in the end, you know, it tied into mathematics, the science skills, and that sense of engagement with the community was really, you could see that through the whole unit. And then finally, if you have time, you know, I know you're going to hit the road after the meeting because of the roads are a little snowy, but right outside here, you'll see some 5th grade art projects that Mrs. King is doing. There's some sculptures. They're literally hot off the kiln, and they're not literally hot, but you could touch them. Don't touch them because they're real fragile. Anyways, they're on display. So if you exit out this way, right outside Ms. Costello's room, you'll see some really neat art projects here. So thank you very much, and I appreciate you letting me speak in front of you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Definitely good to be here. All right. At this time, is there any public comment? All right. If not, are there any changes to the agenda? Then we will dive right into committee meetings.
We kind of took an integrated approach here, and thought we would provide an update in terms of our district goals. And so it starts with Education Committee, but really, we'll just kind of go on through the goals, if that's fine. But certainly we'd want committee chairs to ask particular questions, or any board members to ask questions that you might have. But we thought here at the early February was a good time to sort of take stock in terms of where we are with our goals. So as you all know, we have a strategic plan. This is year five of a five-year plan, and we spent time together in the fall in developing district goals. So with that, actually, I'd like to have Angela come on up and start with our student learning goals. And again, feel free to interject or ask questions, and we'll try to eliminate jargon as best we can, but certainly challenge us to explain anything that is too jargony.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, School Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toye. Audience, we're going to go through and talk about the goal updates, I think. So as you can see here, these are the six goals that, as a leadership team, we have looked at for the school year, the 2019-2020 school year. We're going to run through tonight each of these goals and the specific actions under those goals. And so we're going to start with student learning. And the first specific action under student learning is the full implementation of aligned units of study in elementary science. The focus of this goal is that by the end of the year, we'll have everyone trained and ready to fully implement our science units of study. As you may remember, we had at least two teachers at every grade level, K through 5, write science units that are aligned to the next-generation science standards. And so those units were then put into the Defined STEM Platform. And so what we've been working on this year is training on the Defined STEM Platform as well as training with the science units. We have, the people who wrote those units have been piloting them throughout the year. So every school has been represented at at least one grade level, two grade levels. Every school has at least one or two people that help write the unit, so every school is participating in the pilot at at least one or two grade levels. So we have a group of teachers piloting, and then we have the rest of the staff that's training on Defined STEM and on the science units. We've had a couple of trainings already, where we trained in the summer as well as in December. We have a training tomorrow for teachers, that is, all day, and then we have a training in May for the rest of the teachers who have not touched the Defined STEM Platform or the science units. I'm also working with the teachers who are piloting the units so that we can refine them and continue to work with any challenges that we've had so that we can address those and work those challenges prior to the full implementation next year where everybody will be teaching from these units. There was something else I was going to say about that, but I forgot at the moment, so I will come back to it. The next specific action is providing teachers opportunities to understand and apply best practices in grading and assessment tied to identified learning standards. So the elementary teachers have had the opportunity to understand and apply these best practices of grading and assessment tied to identified learning standards through our coaching practices with the Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative, which you may have heard of as MCMI. So we've gone through MCMI coaching this year that was designed a little bit differently than in the past couple of years, where this year, we have focused on working with an entire grade level, K through 5, on looking at the math assessments that we're using with our students and making sure they're aligned to the standards. Then the teachers would go back, teach the unit, give the assessment, and then we'd meet again following that assessment being given to students so we could look at how the students did on the assessment, look to see if the assessment really assessed what we were teaching, and then make adjustments for next year on those assessments so that they're better aligned to the standards and meeting the needs of our students as far as what we're teaching our kids. Making sure we're not tricking them or trapping them into trying to answer questions that they've had no exposure to. So this has actually been a great discussion for us with common assessments that are tied to our standards and the feedback that we're giving to our students and our parents. Because we're giving our students feedback on how they're doing in mastering these standards, which is not, as we've been talking as a staff, is not matching the type of feedback we give to our parents when we talk about report cards and end-of-trimester reporting. So we are going to continue to work on standards, not just in math, but we're going to work on it now, looking at ELA as well, moving into next year. And we're going to, in the next month or so, begin that conversation again, not really begin, but continue that conversation that's been had on how are we reporting on our standards, assessments of students' progress and achievement.
That's a pre-assessment and then a post-assessment?
Correct.
Did I understand that correctly?
Mm-hmm. And I don't know that I said it, but thank you. We gave, we give a pre-assessment to the students, and we were looking at how that pre-assessment matched up to the post-assessment, too. Because that's another thing we discovered, that not all of the Math &amp; Focus pre-assessments were matching what was tested on the post-assessment. So then there was that misalignment there as well. We wanted to see, what do our kids know before we teach? Then we teach it, and what did they learn from us teaching? So that mismatch was not giving us the information that we needed. So we did adjust that as well.
Okay. And another touch point outside of just basic standardized testing, too.
Mm-hmm. The next action is the refinement of the multi-tiered system of supports process, MTSS process, that promotes agreed-upon assessments and the effective determination of the level of support needed for our students. So this goal around MTSS is a continuation of work around ensuring that the work we're doing in each school is more uniformed as a district and less done building by building. Remembering that MTSS is the way we use our academic and social-emotional data to determine if we're meeting our students' needs, or if they need more support or enrichment that may come in small groups or may come in a one or a teacher working with one to two students at a time. So as we're working towards refining the MTSS process, we've looked at resources, the resources we have at Tier 1, which is what everyone receives. We've looked at our Tier 2 level of resources, which is what those small groups might receive for supports and enrichment, and we've looked at what resources we've been using for Tier 3, which is that intensive 1 to 2 ratio. We've set specific requirements for students to access these supports at the Tier 2 and Tier 3 level, and we're exploring a data management system for us to have all of our data housed in one place that will align to our technology safety rules and regulations. Currently, when our school teams are meeting to talk about data, there is one or two, there are one or two people that have been going to MAP and WEA and then Ames Web or Fast Bridge, or sorry, not Ames Web anymore, but Fast Bridge, to pull the different pieces of data for the students so that's all ready for the meeting. This data management system that we're exploring will be able to have all that information in one place, which will make the meetings more efficient and effective when we're talking about student needs. We are also beginning the work of creating a district MTSS manual implementation guide for these systems and procedures so that everything is in writing and is there for all five buildings. Continuing to refine our social-emotional learning strategies while ensuring the use of inclusive practices to promote the success of all learners. So I'm going to, right now, talk about the things we're doing to refine our social-emotional learning strategies. A few slides later, we'll talk more about the inclusive practices that we're doing as a district. So we've had a committee of psychologists, social workers, and classroom teachers that have been exploring the social-emotional standards to ensure that we have a solid understanding of what it is we are really working towards teaching our students with SEL learning. And we want to make sure that we understand the alignment from kindergarten through 8th grade of those social-emotional learning standards, as well as the criteria for meeting those standards. We've taken an inventory of our current social-emotional learning resources, and now that we've taken that inventory, we're working to determine if we have the appropriate Tier 1 resources, so those resources that are going to benefit all of our students, as well as the appropriate Tier 2 and Tier 3 resources that will provide the supports that we know are needed for some of our students in the realm of social-emotional learning.
Any questions about those student learning goals?
Any questions or share, is there anything you'd like to add, too?
I just wanted to, something I should have asked when we were first talking about the science, Defined STEM pilots. Are they all, do they spiral up to content-wise, like where the junior hires would be? You know what I'm asking? Like, is it a physical science content area that kind of gets?
Every grade level.
I'm assuming it's not biological science, it would be a physical science transition since it's Defined STEM.
Every grade level has a physical science unit, a biological science unit, or a life science unit, and then an earth science unit. So everybody experiences all three of those sciences, K through 5.
Oh, that's great. Okay. I was just wondering if it was just physical, because they tend to kind of focus on physical science in their early Howser years. Just wondering how that works.
So all developmentally appropriate for each of those?
Oh, yeah, of course. I was just wondering about the exposure, because you can go all over the place in content, so thank you.
One question I had, we just said it a minute ago, so you were talking about Level 1, 2, and 3 resources. I assume Level 1 were teachers, and what is Level 2 and 3? How does that work?
So Level 1 is, when we talk about Tier 1 with MTSS, we're talking about, no worries, we're talking about what everybody can access. So on the academic side, it's your core curriculum. On the SEL side, it's the instructional practices teachers might use, as well as SEL, a social-emotional learning curriculum, that we might use, too. So it's going to be something that touches everybody. The Tier 2 resources for both academic and for social-emotional learning are going to be the resources that we use for smaller groups of students, or the strategies under SEL that we might use for smaller groups of students. So we've noticed, we may have noticed, that there are 20% of our students who are not mastering a certain social-emotional learning standard or a certain academic standard. And we would then take those groups of students based off data, group them appropriately, and have a resource that's going to meet those needs to better support them, or enrich them on the opposite side of that diamond. And then the Tier 3 would be more intensive resources, where students might be meeting with an interventionist or with a reading specialist if it's academic, or with the social worker if it's social-emotional learning, to do more intensive one-on-one or 1 to 2 work with that adult.
So more like curriculum, I guess, as resources, not people?
It's both. So in math or in language arts, it might be the reading specialist or the math interventionist that are working with students who need more support, or it might be the advanced learning teachers who are working with students who need more enrichment at those Tier 2 and Tier 3 levels.
Okay. Yeah, glad I asked. Thanks.
Thank you for asking. I appreciate it.
I saw a question on the science unit stuff. How is the new science curriculum different from the old science curriculum? What's the basic difference between the two?
That's a great question. So with the old science units, we've been using FAS, which is a hands-on exploratory program. The new science units that were written were written through a project-based learning lens. So they're exploring real-world situations through the Defined STEM Platform. There's a video, or there's an activity that will lend itself to explaining how that particular overarching theme relates to real-world jobs, professions. And we start with that, and then the kids are working through a project-based lens to learn more about the science topic.
So it's not the, the subject matter is not different, it's the differences that it's project-based as opposed to?
For the most part. So at some grade levels, we have changed the subject matter, maybe, and I don't know all the previous topics, but for instance, it may not be that at a certain grade level they learn about volcanoes during earth science, they might have a different topic for that earth science lesson, because it may have lent itself better to a project-based learning and to the videos that the Defined STEM Platform had available.
And when you say project-based, what does that mean in a nutshell? I mean, as opposed to, if you're contrasting that to what exactly? What's the basic difference?
The basic difference, like when you boil it all down, is that students are using real-world scenarios to explore topics within a theme.
Okay. And what would be, just, do you have an example of that off the top of your head? I mean, what's sort of like, what would be an example of that?
I am trying to think of one of the units that we have, and I am blanking at the moment.
I wonder if Jen would be willing to share.
Oh, Jen is right here. I didn't see you speak in.
Didn't we have students come show us?
Jen actually.
The students who came and showed us their science programs.
Come on up. Jen actually wrote one. Jen actually wrote one of the grade levels' units, worked in collaboration with another teacher to help write the units.
Well, welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jen Olman. I teach 2nd grade at Ames. So for 2nd grade, one of the project-based Defined STEM sciences that we have is, there is a new community being built, and it is near a floodplain. So what the children have to do is learn about how could we possibly keep this town safe? And they'll be investigating different ways to help prevent floods. And then through all of the work that they do, they will be presenting to like a community board, and the community board will get to vote on which flood prevention they'd like to use for their town, based on what the children do, what the children share with the board. So it's really cool. It's a lot different than what we've done before, and it's, there are other grade levels that they've already done it. Ours has not, we haven't started it yet, it's coming soon, but it's really exciting. I think the kids are going to love it. And it's different, you know, before what we had done, let's see, for floods. So what we did with that was we learned about, we had a rain gauge outside and we measured rainfall, and that was part of FAS science. We looked at blowing bubbles in the wind and how do they travel to explore wind. So we're taking the same weather-based concepts, but we're putting it into this project management system, which is going to be amazing. So that's that, yeah.
You should explain that much better than I do. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I only know, you know, a surface-level understanding of Defined STEM, but can you explain like the GRASP model and how the children take the performance task and use it? Because I know it's a specific approach.
And I just sat through a couple of trainings. You know, as we were preparing for this presentation, I was trying to anticipate the types of questions that might be asked. And I cannot, I cannot quote off the top of my head what each letter stands for in GRASP.
I think it's just that, it's more, it's almost like what you were saying where you have the rain, it's almost like the rain barrel where you have, something like you have a product, but you have to, you have an audience, you have a goal, the G for goal, something, it's been a while.
G for goal, R for research.
Yes.
A for, I think it is, audience.
But something about, they have to approach it in almost, almost a business management process. But I also wanted to ask, is literacy part of this task?
Literacy is a piece in, I'm sure, in every different science unit. So doing some reading, doing some.
Are they doing the research and reading?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, great. Yeah, I was hoping, I thought they must have to if they're going to look at what floodplain resource they're using. But it is, it is a different, a different way to do stuff than, we used to teach with, here's your vocabulary list, and here's, here's your diagram, and you fill that out. So I'm hoping they still get the vocabulary and things like that, but maybe they can put it together in a problem-solving way, I think is what the GRASP.
They are still getting some of the vocabulary when you're talking about the research area. I can't remember the S, but then the P, so G for goal, the goal of the project, R for the research that the child will be responsible for, A for the audience, as Jen explained, that particular unit they're presenting to a board, a committee board. The S I do not remember right now, but the P is then for that product. So the product for the lesson Jen just gave the example for is that presentation that you give to the board about your ways of solving that floodplain.
Right. Yeah, it's just, I remember it being explained when we first originally did pilots, but it's been a long time, so.
And that's a piece of every unit, so that's in the teacher's layout of the plan for the unit, and when the students access Defined STEM on their devices, it's part of there when they see their layout as well.
Okay.
And then coming in, she brought something for us, yeah. Yeah, and it was like.
Right.
Those were the three.
Yeah.
And there was one about like, why is your teacher only bringing three things?
Mm-hmm. You could only bring 10 things, and what, you know, I remember the kids talking about that, so. Right. I believe that's the same.
It is. It is the same. Those are 3rd grade units.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something we would bring back, bring teachers back to present sort of across the grade levels, if that's something that the students should learn more about?
That'd be great. We can do it.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. I'll be back.
Learning is much more fun now.
What's that?
Learning is so much more fun these days.
The other goal here we had is family engagement and communication. This is a goal we've really had now for several years, is to make sure that we annually distribute a District 96 Community Report so that we're able to reach out to not just the parents of District 96, but really all of the community members that make up the District 96 boundaries. And I think, we don't get a lot of feedback in that, but I think that's, you know, the occasional feedback we get is positive. We also have identified just doing more district-wide communication from the district office specifically. I know when I started, I think there was just a sense of trying to build a sense of a person in the superintendent's office and the district office and connecting with the community to really just build more trust and connection, and really rely a lot on our parents, our principals, I should say, in terms of the more detailed communication, perhaps. We know when we look at district-wide communications that people tend to look first at the teacher classroom newsletter, then maybe at the principal's newsletter and information, and then the district office. But, you know, we do want to keep putting information out there, in particular this year, as you all know well, we've done several presentations specific to all of the facilities' work going on, not just the presentations we've done at the board table, but also traveling to each school and doing updates for the community and interested parents from those schools or from the community. It's interesting, just last week, right, we had parents here, actually, one is a Blythe parent and another parent, both who work for the FBI, that did a presentation on digital safety, and had 110 parents show up for that.
That's a lot.
I would say that's kind of unheard of.
It's a lot for us.
For an evening parent presentation. Also Pam Shaw and her team brought in Rogers Behavioral Health and did a presentation on understanding children who have anxiety and helping parents address those kinds of needs. And we had about 50 parents at that event, so also, that, for us, is a very high number. I tend to think of sort of 20 or 30 parents at an event feels successful, so when we had as many as 110 and 50, I think we're, you know, kind of hitting a nerve or identifying a need in areas that families would like to learn more. So we want to be seen as that, as a source for information about children and children's learning and children's needs. So that's been, those have been very positive. The parent leadership team, our PTAs and PTOs have done a nice job partnering with us and also helping us identify topics and areas of interest. So that's been an ongoing goal. I already mentioned just the part about communication to families from building principals, and that's something we've talked about as a team, just trying to even sometimes align our messages and make sure that really all parents are getting good information from principals, clear information, and obviously informative in terms of what's going on at the schools and what's going on in terms of student learning in general. So those are our family engagement and communication goal areas. We also have talked just kind of in general about the experiences our students have, and this has been, again, something the board already sort of understands well, this goal of improving outdoor learning spaces for our elementary school students that promote play, student health, and appreciation for the natural environment. As you all know, we formed a Playground Steering Committee, specifically, we really call it the Playground Steering Committee for Ames and Hollywood, as we've been able to, with our facility projects developing and evolving, really identify some specific goals for outdoor learning and play at those two schools. We then have a different process running kind of simultaneously, but on a different timeline, specific to Central and Howser. So obviously, we want to make those same improvements for Central and Howser. Also, we just know that the setting at Central and Howser is a bit more complicated with traffic and the parking and the level of blacktop already there, and just how the property is kind of set right there in the middle, a very busy part of town. So we'd heard actually just yesterday, the Facilities Advisory Committee, we'll bring more of that information forward, but if Joel and Linda want to add any additional comments on that, that we heard sort of a, kind of a first overview from Lakota Group, which is the landscape architecture firm that we've hired to look at the Central Howser campus, and really kind of just, you know, thinking about how they could potentially reorganize the area, really what they call sort of the backyard of the school, the back part of the school. Not really refined concepts, but more sort of generalized concepts, like if there was some modification to parking, if there was some modification to the location of green space. I should let you two have more.
They are in the first parts of their study. They've talked to students and parents about what they think they need, and then they're looking at that space essentially, as Martha said, the backyard, to see what ways it can be perhaps better arranged with regards to parking and play and really separating out the two things. They've got three major ideas or concepts of how things could be spread around, and they've tried to be really creative, and that's always the hardest part, because how much opportunity are you going to have to change? And just what, there was a lot of focus on what Howser needed for PE, because obviously now it's kind of funny with being half on asphalt and half in the grass. But they're continuing, now that they've gotten feedback from. in the grass. But they're, they're continuing, now that they've gotten feedback from the facilities group, they're gonna take some of those ideas and refine them further and take some more ideas that were given to them and flesh them out, flesh them out more.
Well, yes, or like, are we headed in the right direction? Is this what you're asking us to do, is to make some modifications?
They kept saying too, like, it reminds me back, several years back when we were working with DLA and it was like these big idea, you know, some of them are big ideas and it's almost like they're looking at it as if, if we could recruit, if we could build this today, what would we do? So a lot of the ideas thrown up there are very, yeah, that's not gonna work.
It's conceptual, but you have to-
But it's neat to have that big picture, like that creative new look at the space and then to have the conversation at the table with Bill Radke Hussein, but what about, you know, like the very practical thing. So it's a really, you know, it was the first time we got to have that conversation. I thought it was really productive, at least, you know. I think for most of us there, I think it's very hard to think that far out of the box. And so it's neat to see some out-of-the-box ideas to see what, what could possibly happen.
And to that point, that's the value of bringing in an outside consultant because they may bring some new ideas or at least try and see, are there better ways that we can really change things up and get the services that we want?
So thanks to both of you for being part of that. I also, I don't wanna leave Blythe Park. I've mentioned four schools and I leave Blythe out, but Blythe, as we all know, is adjacent to park district property. And so they really have a lovely outdoor green space as well as fairly nice playground. So they're not in our particular study. One thing that the, the village has commented on as a possibility is as we look to refine the playgrounds at three or four of our schools, and we've talked about sort of what's a playground at Hauser, it may not be the play equipment, but there may even be some access to play equipment, certainly to outdoor play and sport kind of things. But that maybe then the, the village will be able to kind of focus on the Blythe Park, Park over time if, if there were improvements that would need to be made. So any other comments or thoughts on that? The other, the other goal area that we identified was to develop a, a plan for a later start time at Hauser Junior High. And there's, sort of digging into the, the history as I understand it, in, in the 2015-2016 school year, there was, we lengthened the day at, at Hauser, right? We added an advisory time, we went to the double period of mathematics. There's also just kind of an examination that looked like the junior high day in comparison to other junior highs in the areas was, was just a shorter instructional day. So my understanding is that we lengthened the instructional day and therefore adjusted the start time. What had been 8:35, I think, went to 8 o'clock. And I know the board has asked, just very recently, if we could consider a later start time for Hauser Junior High. We knew that by getting the central students out of the shared Hauser Central lunchroom, that we were going to create more flexibility, really for both schedules, that Central would now be able to run in tandem with all the other elementary schools, which has some gains for us around part-time staff, sharing, that kind of thing. Just gives Hauser the flexibility that no one now has to eat lunch at, what, 10:15, nor at 1:25, whatever the, that latest time is. So those are exciting steps. Those are steps that are embedded very purposely in the long-range facility plan. We know in terms of a later start time for middle school, that there's some research on adolescent sleep that says that our adolescents and sort of pre-adolescent adolescents do best if they could start school a little bit later. I think it's fair to call it a trend in education. I believe the state of California has just mandated a later start time for their middle schools and high schools. So it's a very interesting consideration. We've done some informal surveying of the schools, the middle schools in our area. There's certainly schools that are starting at 8:30, 8:25. I know Oak Park Middle School start as late as 9 o'clock AM. And we also know there's still middle schools in our area that are starting at 7:30. And everyone kind of has their own unique community story. Sometimes it's linked to transportation, sometimes it's just the desires of the, the community for perhaps other reasons, just maybe the way the different schools are sort of stacked up. We know that there's some interplay between the Central and Hauser schedules, that there are both older siblings that might get kids to school or pick kids up after school. And we know that the 15-minute stagger, we think between Central and Hauser, sort of our, the early traffic analysis, they said, keep that 15-minute stagger. You know, with, if you adjust time, maybe you adjust the times in general. He said, I wouldn't put a half hour between the two schools. There's probably a lot of families that drop kids off at both schools and can kind of do it at roughly the same time. So those are sort of the areas that we have been giving some thought to. April and Kristy did float the idea out to the Hauser staff to get some initial feedback. Real honesty, the feedback they got is mixed. And I think that, that makes sense because I think people are thinking about the students at the school and schedules and change is always, changes simply change, sometimes, sometimes easy and sometimes hard for people, as well as just family schedules and staff schedules too. So one idea, and really would like the board, I'd like this to be kind of a point of discussion for you to weigh in on this. One idea would be to take some time and survey the community. I, I think when you, when you ask a question, you know, we have to be prepared then that, my guess is we'll get a mixed response. It really is, I, I shared both sort of information from our teacher contract as well as our policies around the school year, that this is ultimately something that the board could direct or I could recommend. But we also wanna do it sort of for the right reasons and with the right information from the community. I know when it was done in 2015, it was kind of done in the summer. The decision was made to make school-
The early release?
No, the 8 o'clock start time.
Also added the time where they could go visit their teachers, which they hadn't had before. So that kind of period that otherwise they were, they were running through the whole day without an opportunity to go back and engage with someone if they needed extra help or if they needed to do some makeup work. And a lot of parents were really thankful that that was put in.
That time, that there's kind of an undesignated teacher ti, I shouldn't say undesignated, sort of time, when-
They, they also do-
There's a 20, 25-minute time in the middle of the day, yeah.
They do also do SEDL training with groups. They do, they rotate depending on what day it is. But that was one of the primary factors.
Yeah.
It wasn't just to make the day longer, it was-
Well, that's the advisory. I think, I think what you're talking about is the advisory.
The advisory was, was part of some emotional support, some academic support, just all around a need that was, we were trying to reach the need.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Right. And this, and the double method, it would not have worked with-
No, it wouldn't.
So that was, that was what was claimed at the time.
Yeah. No, I think it's clear, the reasons are clear. I mean, I actually went back and listened to some board conversations. No, I, I didn't mean to say that the reasons weren't, weren't clear in terms of why the day was lengthened. It just caused the time to have to start earlier to make enough hours.
I think, I think the point you're trying to make is instead of just, maybe that decision was ma, you know, like get more community feedback before we make another.
Right. I think, yeah, just one more point to add on that, which is that I don't think, I think the whole thing obviously would have worked if we started, we added that, was it 20 minutes to the day? Well, how many minutes was it? 20?
Two.
10?
I don't remember.
I thought it was more like 25.
It was like 20, 20 minutes, some of that, yeah. It would have worked if we started at 8:30. Just, I mean, doesn't really matter so much. I think the two considerations there was, was the central lunch-
Right.
-confusion. That was the, one of the reasons that we had to sort of start earlier. I mean, that meant a major reason. The other reason that was, that was floated that I never found compelling, but I think this sort of, what carried the day, is that the Hauser sports teams, if they were to sort of get out of school at 3:30, as opposed to 3 o'clock, would sort of be late for their events, that their, their away events. I'm not sure how much I buy that because-
Can I, I think that the idea was that a lot of the other schools were already out. So it didn't mesh with who you were competing against.
Exactly.
That was the thought.
Now, that's, I've heard many complaints from parents who say that the buses that we hire to take the students to these events don't show up until 3:45 or 4 o'clock or anything. They're always chronically late, so it's not-
I think the 3:30 dismissal time would work for sports. I, so the superintendent's, actually, we are, we meet once or twice a year at the sports conference and I-
So that's not a reason anymore?
Sort of floated that one out. I think that, that does not need to be a deterrent.
That's good.
That was an old bus owner though, wasn't it?
It was.
Didn't we, I think we took steps to-
Our transportation's still not as reliable as we would like it to be. Unfortunately, we're kind of a small player in the transportation world. And so some schools have their bus company that's doing all their student transportation. I think sometimes they get first, first dibs, so to speak.
Priority.
But we've, we continue to communicate pretty regularly.
But if that's not a point of contention at this point.
Improvements have been made. I think there's probably some days where it's still problematic.
Yeah, I would really like to know what parents and the community feels about it because I do, you know, of course, it's not a decision made based on like, oh, well, I personally don't like it or, you know, but just, I would love to hear the, the feedback because I personally see pros and cons to it. I'm not 100% sold either way as a board member. So I would love to hear what the community thinks. I mean, in my personal situation, a family situation, an 8:30 start would be troublesome. But that doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do. So it's just, you know, like, I would like to hear, I don't think it's an easy, you know, decision. I would like to make sure that we, we talk to people, we get feedback before we ever implement something, so.
Along similar lines, I would be curious to hear what, what other feeder districts into RB have thought about this. It sounds like you've told some of them.
I have.
Or what RB thinks about it themselves. They've probably had a lot of similar constraints that have been mentioned.
Yeah, so RB starts at 8, right? And it's whether they, you know, I think schools are sort of at this moment, when I, when I talk to other district leaders, we'd like to do it, but we can't. And oftentimes it's we can't for transportation or we can't because we're, we have grade level centers and we have to stagger all of our starts. Or, you know, I mean, like I said, everybody seems to have their story. I actually think we could do it. We're, we're not reliant on transportation. I think keeping that Central Hauser stagger means, means something to families. I know the principals would tell you, there's a fair amount of sort of kids that are sort of back and forth between the front of the two schools, waiting for a sibling or picking up a sibling.
That's definitely true. I see that.
Yeah. So I would wanna be thoughtful about that. Again, it's not that that's something that couldn't be fixed even with offering some additional supervision. I mean, there's ways to address probably any potential barrier. It's just what's, what's seen as, as better. If, if there's one, I think, Linda, to your point, maybe we won't get a clear cut, one that clearly feels better. But it's, I think it's important for the board to-
That offset there, that, that sort of staggering thing. It's certainly easy to keep that just by flipping the time.
Right, 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 right.
So you go to 8:10 for the other-
So that, that shouldn't be an issue, aren't you?
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of the survey, of course, it's always good to ask people what they think. The, the only question that always occurs in these kinds of surveys is how representative is the sample? I mean, are you getting, what, you know, what percentage of people are responding? And if the people do respond, are they really representative of the entire population that are, and, and the answer to that is always very questionable, you know?
Well, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be saying, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we're, we're doing this survey because we're like, oh, 53% say yes, let's do it. I more so wanna hear what their feedback is. Because it could help us troubleshoot or help us lead us to a certain direction. Because I, you know, I have my experience with my family, but that, that is just one out of, you know.
No, I mean, I agree.
So I, I wanna hear what other, like, what, what other circumstances. So I'm not saying like, it would be a survey of should we do it yes or no and we go with the answer. More so like, the feedback. I don't really care about-
No, I think that's, yeah, that, that makes sense. The other, the other consideration, I think that we have to sort of ultimately look at is that even if, there will always be people like, like you who are going to be inconvenienced by any change.
Oh, absolutely.
Anytime there could change, someone is gonna be inconvenienced. Someone's not-
Well, no, I won't be because I won't have a kid. That's why I'm really taking myself out of it. I don't have, I won't have any kids.
We should sort of bear that in mind. And those are the people, we certainly will hear from them, more so than the people who are neutral or positive. And the, but the criteria, I think ultimately has to be the one that Martha alluded to, which is that there is a fair amount of research indicating, and certainly as, as we all know, as we get kids moving into the teenage years, they naturally start to sleep later. And it's better, the belief is, the evidence is showing, that, that it's better for the kids to start later. And to me, that seems like, you know, that should be the ultimate criteria, is that what is best for our students. And that should be the decision, you know, what the decision ultimately rests on. Are the students gonna learn better because they come to school, they're a little more awake, they're a little more engaged?
On the flip side of that, a lot of families, their kids might not be sleeping any later because the family's life is still starting earlier.
Right.
So, so that's what I'm seeing, the feedback of that. Like, I'm not necessarily sure that in most situations, a half an hour later means a kid's getting a half hour more sleep. I think what it means is a kid has a half an hour, because the, the family has woken up, there's half an hour more, maybe to do your homework or maybe to do something else. But I'm not necessarily sure that the half an hour later equals half an hour more sleep for everybody. And that's why I would love to hear from people because I don't know.
It would for people like my family who walk because that's no, it's not a big deal for us. So my daughter would, who had, is now at RB, could definitely get more sleep because she just would walk to Hauser. But if you're driving-
Yeah. Or just, you know, parents are getting up because they're both going to work. And it's, that doesn't mean my kid's sleeping in 30 minutes more. That means, now my kid's just sitting there for 30 minutes, you know. And that's why I'm just saying, every family is so different. And that's why I just wanna hear the, the feedback so that we can make, you know, a very, you know, a choice with-
Adjustments.
Providing, yeah, like, wanna make sure that-
I mean, and the thing is, to your point, Jeff, I mean, I, I think it's important to study, all the studies are saying, I mean, there's no disagreement that-
Absolutely.
Kids are starting to sleep later and it's better for the kids. But then how much more time? Because I actually, in the past month, I read about a school up in Michigan, they're trying, they're doing a pilot program, I believe it's for the high, high school, where they're actually starting school at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
And running it.
Oh, God.
And sort of schools continuously-
Can we not do that?
Right.
The teachers are there like, absolutely.
So.
Seriously, high school, like a noon start sounds perfect.
I think 10 or 11, it was something I read and what, like, that would probably, probably be ideal.
Right. So I, so I guess the thing is-
I'm all on board with that.
To Linda's point, I, I think there's so many factors involved. I mean, my kid's gonna be up regardless because our day starts early. And, but I guess the thing is, we just have to look at, so for each situation, it's gonna be different. I think we should, let's find out what the community wants and sort of keep that in mind, not starting at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, but.
And, yeah, and if we do decide to go to an 8:30 start, like, what are the concerns and how can we address those concerns?
Yeah, exactly.
Because, I mean, the last thing I wanna do is just make something and inconvenience people and, you know, I mean, like I said, I'm not sure where I fall on this, but I, I think we just need community feedback. I, I would like to take this, like-
So what ideas, if we were gonna, if we were willing to wait a year to take a year to gather some data, that we could link it to registration? And you can almost make a forced, a forced choice in terms of a, you know, do you prefer, and what sort of scale do you prefer a later start time?
Oh, to this year's registration?
With that idea that you don't hear from everybody and you tend to hear in a survey, you have people who feel really strongly, right, one way or the other?
I was, that, that's actually better than what I thought of because I was thinking maybe student, uh, parent-teacher conferences.
Mm-hmm.
But I think a, I don't, I can't think of the words, but a, a wider, larger net of survey responses and commentary especially would be better than just the agenda-driven survey.
Why don't we do both? Because that, you get the narrative, that, you get the yes or no. It's very binary. And here, you actually get some feedback with it. Because people are, do you wanna put any comments? I probably wouldn't put any comments if I didn't care. So having both of those, you get anecdotal pre-feedback, then you get actual required feedback. The only thing I was gonna add is not everybody's gonna be reading all this research.
Yeah.
So if we could do some sort of like one-page abstract.
Here's why this conversation is happening.
Exactly. It's not just, do you want, like, why are you asking me this question? Here's, and like somehow drip that out early and maybe a couple times.
I think it was even when I first started teaching, it was like the University of Minnesota started doing all of this research many years before a lot of the other universities. So I know there's more even than that. But I think it did start in this kind of Midwest region oddly enough.
And I think some of it's linked to this also use of technology and the kids are up, you know, I mean, that, that's sort of a different problem in a way, part of, you know, less sleep, more time on devices and bedtimes.
Yeah. I mean, it's hard to get a twelve-year-old to do that.
Something, something I can't help, something I can't help but consider or wonder what the implications of it are, is that I, my impression is RB is going to be pretty inflexible about their start time. So, you know, even if we were to stagger our, our start time back when most kids are matriculating to RB, they're gonna be reverting back to earlier in the morning schedule. How does that affect things?
Well, it's a temporary growth boost.
What's your, what's your, I'm just curious what you're, would you base that on, that belief that, because I know there's a couple of board members that RB have expressed an interest in later start. I'm so curious about what you're-
I, I guess in my own supposition, knowing about kids and their activities and how, how busy at least my daughter's activities are in the, going into the evening and early evening, or later evening, it, I would think that those activities in particular would preclude a later start time, or at least would run into similar issues that have been expressed with us.
For like sports or that kind of thing or sort of?
Sports or, I mean, there's a lot of other things going on. There's sports, there's, there's musicals, there's, you know, one, one debate team or another, something along those lines. All those things seem to be predicated about starting right after school and then trying to get everything done in the end by 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock.
So it sounds like possibly also just having conversations with RB and the other feeder schools would be, you know, like to see where, where their temperatures are all of this.
I agree. I think it'd be great if RB were to, to pursue this as well. Because I think I agree. I think it'd be great if RB were to, to pursue this as well, because I think it'd be, it's even more important for high school students.
I can see benefits of it, yes. But I guess if we're not doing it hand-in-hand, I do worry about, is it a problem of establishing this pattern with kids early, only to throw them back to early mornings when they go to high school?
I don't think it's any more different than, I, I'm personally speaking, I don't think it's any more different than them naturally changing, as they would anyway, to have a few years of, of growth. I don't think it's a bad thing, whether they have to transition back or not. That's part of things they deal with, but it seems like something we should at least fix for.
It's one of the questions, right, that I have heard, you know, that, well, is it helpful, right, for your middle school years to maybe go later to only in high school, than have to go back to the earlier time?
Mm-hmm.
Hard to say, right? But, sort of trying to, sort of distill the, the conversation here, would people be comfortable saying that this is something we would look into over the course of next year? So we wouldn't start fall of '20 with a new start time, that we would take the 2021 school year to study it, and then come up with a recommendation by, you know, maybe next year at this time, so that then families would have a opportunity to adjust, if we're going to make an adjustment?
I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't think it's something we want to make a hasty decision on, for sure.
Right, no, I agree. I guess, going back to the survey, though, can we combine, I mean, can we do both the basic quantitative and more the, more the narrative at the same time of registration? Because I do think-
I do.
It would be good to get what people say, like, say that, somebody says, like, they will know we want to stick with 8 o'clock, or somebody says we want to stick with 8:30, and then they give us a narrative at the same time. I almost think we should just put them together and say, you know, to-
Registration seems to me, this time, like, you have to register, right? You have to complete your, your new registration, so if there was some forced choice question-
And it's earlier than it used to be, which is more helpful, to have the data earlier.
Yeah.
But you only have to say yes or no, though. I mean, unless you're forced to comment, and then just put a period or NA or something like that, and then you're still not-
You could do a yes, no, and then option.
I mean, people who, there should be an option to comment, and people can comment if they want, you know, like.
Yeah, an option. But I, I wouldn't expect the teachers, each individually, to like, gather all this data and everything. It'd be kind of anecdotal, but at least somewhat directional, like, eh, I got a lot of people that were kind of indifferent, or I got two or three that, you know, not like, here's my spreadsheet of all the parents I talked to and stuff like that.
Oh, no, I wouldn't expect the teachers to do it on their own.
No, I think it would go through, you have enough to do.
This is, this is, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the, the input. So we will, we'll make that our plan for moving forward, is to take more time to study it, and, and come up with more specific ways to do that, to do that. And we have been gathering some data from other districts, and I can certainly bring that forward, too, so. Angela and I, Angela had touched on earlier, the goal area about inclusivity around social-emotional learning. We also had identified just a, a goal specifically around review and refining practices that promote a culture of inclusivity and support for all learners. I think it's worth always saying, right, that that is always our goal, it's always our purpose, it's always our intention, that children feel welcomed and connected and included in, in whatever ways they participate, in all the ways in which they participate in the educational experience with us. I really do think it's foundational to students' success. So it's kind of that philosophy, and it's a practice that I think is implemented every day by our staff. But there's also ways that we can kind of be even more refined and, and take more specific actions. And Angela's going to comment on some of that.
Angela, it's important to note, with all the great things that we are doing to promote inclusivity, and continue to ensure that all of our learners feel bonded and connected to school. As Dr. Ryan Toy was saying, there are still ways that we can continue to refine it. Like, we know that it does go beyond special education and our English language learners, that there are other ways that we want to work to ensure our students are inclusive. But right now, I just want to point out some of the things that we've been doing, looking at this goal this year, some of the things we've been doing this year. At Hauser, there's been an increasing recognition of our Special Olympics teams, our Special Olympic sports that are happening. A lot of attendance, a lot of peer support at the different games that have been happening. It's been a wonderful thing to see. The Best Buddies program continues to grow. Our Hauser team is nationally recognized. We have started a Best Buddies group at Central Elementary School, and we're exploring the start of Best Buddies at other elementary schools. So it's a program that our teachers see great benefits in, and are giving up their time, so that we can continue to have this happen and grow, both at Hauser and our feeder schools. Through a survey of students at Hauser Junior High, we've learned that a number of students are feeling more connected at school through various co-curriculars that are occurring at school. We continue facing history in ourselves' curriculum, and we continue to work to expand it beyond our social studies classes and our ELA classes. We're working to be more inclusive of our English learner families through our bilingual parent advisory council. Through our bilingual parent advisory council, we've had meetings where we've explained the different assessments that our students have to take. So we know, as English-speaking families, as a first language, that the number of assessments and the types of assessments can be quite overwhelming. And we recognize that our bilingual families are probably feeling that more so. And so we took the time to explain that, and allow them to ask the questions that they have in a smaller setting at our advisory council. We are hosting a meeting this month to talk to our bilingual families about how parents can be involved in their PTOs and PTAs. And so we have representatives from every school's PTO, PTA group, coming to talk with our parents specifically about their school's groups, and ways to be involved in their students' learning. And we're also working as an administrative team on making our kindergarten information on registration night more inclusive of our Spanish-speaking families. We are currently in the process of working on the presentation to translate the entire presentation, so that it is in Spanish, and we'll have the, both presentations running in English and in Spanish. And then with that Spanish presentation, we'll have closed captioning in Spanish as well, so that when people are speaking, that's being captured on the presentation. Parents will be able to ask questions. We'll have an interpreter there for any questions parents might have that night during the presentation, as well as during the registration process. So those are some of the things that we've been working on this year. But as Dr. Ryan Toy said, it is a continuing evolution of things that we're doing to ensure students are feeling, or students and families have that feeling of inclusivity.
Facility improvement goals, these are probably ones you're not familiar with at all, but.
Just one quick comment, and I don't know if anybody else had a chance to go there, but that whole presentation was phenomenal. The two agents that gave the information had some really good information. It was maybe like 20 minutes, a couple stories that are really jarring. But then it was just like a, a huge Q and A for the rest of the time. That thing probably could have gone another hour long, but I wasn't able to go to the anxiety one, I had a conflict, but I wanted to go to that one, too. So it was really good to see that those were well- well-attended. So whatever we can do to kind of keep those topics up. I think those were, at least that one was pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, it's great feedback. It's, you know, you think about, we think about parent information and support, right? So you want parents to, as a school, you want to be a source of information. You also want to be a source of support. And sometimes it's hard to hit both. And it sounds like that FBI presentation that night was kind of both, that families really connected kind of with each other, in terms of did some problem-solving together, as well as just the, the source of information from-
Yeah, and it even got some dialogue going between parents of like, my kid plays this game, how do you, you know, do X to keep them from talking to people they don't know online, and getting caught up? And so parents were sharing ideas. There's like, two pages or whatever, Jason sent out the, the links to it, of like, all these apps. I'm like, geez, I haven't even heard of half of these apps.
Get ready.
I know, I know. I'm not, so, like, I, I've hated social media from day one, and so I really haven't followed it. It's, I mean, it's crazy how much stuff is out there. So that was just really good information. I think it was pretty eye-opening. And the one thing that they kept reiterating over and over again is, you, the parent, you are the, like, the source of blocking this information. There's a lot of questions, like, well, what app can I get? Or what kind of spyware? And it's like, well, there's plenty of stuff out there. Google it, you'll find one. But you need to look at your kid's phone, and you need to talk to your kids, and open an honest dialogue that this stuff happens, which could probably be a little scary to talk about to younger children and stuff like that. But it was really good. So I just, I wanted to put a quick plug in for that, because I thought it was really good.
Thanks. Todd's going to give us the, the quick overview version here on the facilities.
Yeah, Dr. Ryan Toy came up to me, and she said, would you like to touch upon facility improvements? And I said, we're doing some facility improvements.
What? I haven't heard about that.
And I was, I was honored that she asked me, because I've actually had the privilege of working with the Board of Education, with all the committees we've had, with my staff, with the community, since the beginning, to, you know, kick off these facility improvements. And it looks like we're going to see them come to life. Being selfish right now, I'm very pleased, and I want to thank the Board of Education that we are moving forward with these facility improvements. For one, Ames will become a campus that's going to be EC to grade five. We're currently hovering around 365 students. With our EC learners, we'll be the largest elementary campus, and I'm proud to say that, will be right around 430, 430 students. And the most important thing with that is our early learners will have a place they can call home, because they don't have to go from school to school to figure out where that space is going to be. So this hopefully will be their home for many, many years to come. Well, after I'm retired, I'll be able to come back and still visit with them. So the renovations at Ames, like I said, we're doing that EC, the additional EC wing that's going to be in our back parking lot. We have some interior renovations as well. Ames was fortunate that we already had a secured front, front entrance, so we didn't have to worry about that. And just creating some more space. And the Ames project was interesting, because the one that we thought was going to be the most difficult is turning out, I think, to be the easiest right now. And it's going to help to offset some of the overcrowding in all the other buildings as well, which leads us to Blythe Park. By moving the early learners over to Ames, that creates a two-section school over at Blythe Park with the addition of one classroom. So that's going to be great for the Blythe Park community to have a two-section school. It's also going to be great for the other elementary schools, because it helps to offset those numbers when we're looking at, you know, certain bubbles in enrollment. Central School, and also with Blythe Park, we already, we do not have a secured front entrance at Blythe Park, so we're going to be creating that as well. When we look at Central, we're looking at a secured entrance as well. We're looking at, you know, getting that district, the district office staff, you know, vacated that building last year. We have a new district office that has served wonderfully for not only our leadership team, but for training and parking. I mean, it's amazing how great that district office has turned out for us. In essence, what it did was it also created a space below Central that allows us to have a lunchroom in there, which is going to be, you know, also for selfish reasons, for elementary principals, you know, scheduling, doing a master schedule for all elementary buildings in District 96, when the four principals sit down at the table in the spring and summer, becomes a very unique process when you have one building that has to go on a different schedule, because they share a lunchroom with Hauser, which, you know, very appreciative of Hauser sharing their lunchroom. But I think both parties are going to be equally happy that we, they each have their own lunchrooms, and we can, you know, focus on students and what's great for students. Did I miss anything on that slide?
No.
Oh, I got it all? Cool. Okay, and then Hollywood, we're looking at a secured front entrance as well. And renovation for a small group learning in the previous front office. And lunchroom, multipurpose room for kids to eat. So once again, that's probably a scheduling issue with Mrs. Hefner, with different classes coming in and out, and using that gymnasium for a lunchroom slash gym slash band and orchestra. Just a nice designated space for kids. And I think when you look at all of these facility improvements that we're doing in the district, at the heart of every decision we made was about the children of District 96. And that shows through in the plans, that shows through in the buildings, that shows through in the playgrounds. And I, I just wanted, again, wanted to thank the Board of Education for moving forward with this. And we're looking forward to it. These four slides don't do it justice. We've got three years of work under our belt, and we're proud of it, because we're going to watch it come to life.
Anything else about facilities? Joel, anything else from a committee chair perspective?
No, just that, well, I suppose, do we?
You need to finance next?
No, just each of the, they're moving forward, and that's, that's, no, that's been a comment often, and facilities and infrastructure takes a long time. And it, people don't want it to, but it just does, and we're on a good path to have these various elements be constructed this summer.
And, you know, that, that's true, very true. It takes time. We want to take that time, because we want to get it right. And I think we're, I, I really feel strongly, just from an administrative standpoint, and speaking to my colleagues, we're getting it right. And, you know, you don't have many times out of the gate to get it right, and we're going to do it.
Yep. Thanks. Finance is our next committee area and goal area?
We've got three finance goals to review with you. First is approving a balanced budget. So last September, the Board approved a balanced budget with a $1.6 million operating surplus. And sometime in the next couple of months, we'll need to approve an amended budget that will include the transfers from operating over to capital projects. So we'll get a chance to do two budgets this year.
Yeah.
The next goal is maintaining adequate fund balance. So we ended FY '19 with 125% fund balance. After we transfer the 19.2 million, we expect, and FY '20 this current year, at 55% fund balance. And I'll go over long-term projections in a little bit, but we show fund balance being above 40% for the next nine years through FY '28. The third finance goal is to maintain an ISB score of 4.0. And all the criteria were in the audit. So there's actually a page in there, it calculates it. And we should have a 4.0 for FY '19. And every indication, we'll be able to keep that going through the 10 years of the projections. Jeff, do you want to add anything on?
No, I, I think that, that's very clear, it's a good summary, and a very clear presentation also in the, in the, in the, in your presentation.
All right, and then we had one other goal area, and that was human relations.
Actually, we want to make one more, one more comment, actually. I don't know if he showed, I don't know if Mr. Finn showed this.
He gets some other attachments.
Other, yeah, that, that attachment there, which is the, the one, yeah, that, not that one, but the, the most recent one. Yeah, I don't know if you got that.
This one?
That could be it, yeah. That's the one there, yeah, that one there. Is that the most recent?
So this is where the assumptions are, and that's the new line?
Yes. So this is what, the one you, you talked about, the projections going out a certain number of years. And the only, the only thing I would like to add to this, and I think it's a very clear chart, is that what this shows is, is the, what the fund balance would be under a certain scenario. Mr. Finn's making some reasonable assumptions about the cost, growth, growth in costs, growth in revenue, growth in healthcare, and so forth. And if, if all of those assumptions are true over the next 10 years, then this is what, you know, would happen. But of course, we know that not all of those assumptions are going to be true. And, and so this is just one possible future out of, you know, a given number. And as, as we, so, so I guess my, the only thing I would say to the Board, which of course everyone realizes, is that as you go farther out, it becomes more uncertain. So these, these, even though it looks very clean and kind of comforting, we should be, we should be cautious, because it's, there's a huge amount of uncertainty in actually how things really will play out. They could go, they could become much worse, or they could be better, or whatever, you know, so.
This is actually the one from November.
This is the one, it's not, not the one that's in here.
Just, just wanted to make, I just wanted to make that note, as people are looking at it. The one from February is a little different. Not much, but. Oh, there it is.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's the right one, right?
Yeah.
Operating on 20.
That carries the sound further.
Yeah, no, that's why I wanted to make that note, that we were looking at one, but the, the current one actually looks better. But still, completely.
But the risk that we move forward, I won't, I won't document it, I won't understand, yes.
And obviously, as we move through this, or future boards move through this, they're going to have to course correct at certain points. So, you know, I'm assuming we're not just going to follow.
No, exactly, right, exactly.
But that's, that's what's at the forefront.
Yeah, exactly.
Regardless if we're doing this facility project, or not, we would be, I mean, going 10 years out, I mean, it's, there's always a, farther out you go, the higher the risk it's going to be. I mean, that's just-
Especially when we want to keep programs, we want to keep the same level of staffing. And, right, I'm hopeful we'll be cognizant of every, every batch we get.
That's certainly been part of the conversation we've had, is that we want to do this facilities work while maintaining and supporting a high-quality educational program. We didn't want to, you know, risk the educational program to get the facilities worked on, feeling like there's an opportunity to both.
But I mean, I think, but I also think it's important to point out that we are embarking, I mean, I know we mentioned this, I mentioned this earlier, but we're embarking on a massive facilities, facilities project. And even assuming these projections are all accurate, and everything works out, and like, but we have like, we are not going to referendum. How many schools, I mean, we're not going to referendum, we're paying for this without going to the taxpayers. And even if the tax, even if things, everything goes well, we're not having to address, like, going below what our policy is, like, for another 10 years. So I mean, I think that's like massively, I mean, that's hugely impressive, I think, for this district to be able to do something like that, so.
We're lucky enough to talk to Jim every single month about this.
Anything will go unnoticed.
I'm just hopeful the state doesn't throw too many curveballs in the next few years, so. so that's always the big question.
Well, and kind of into that uncertainty question, like, which ways do the curveballs potentially go?
Which ways are going to go, I know.
Because there's even been some around the property tax relief, they're having too high of a fund balance could be a negative, so...
Right, right, I know, you, they throw out different ideas every term, so...
Right. We had two, we had two other just goal areas in the human relations, and...
And so these two goals, this goal and the next goal, are written separately, but they go hand-in-hand. This first one being to continue to provide a breed of high-quality professional development that's linked to effective practices for promoting student growth and learning. And then the next one, talking about refining both the practices and district structures that support collaboration among our educators aimed at improving high-quality practices and promoting equitable experience for all children in District 96. You can see that these goals are about professional development and collaboration. We are doing this through, the main vehicle we're doing this through is through the 12, 75-minute professional development timeframes that were negotiated in this latest contract. Through these professional development meetings, we've had a chance for teachers across the district at the elementary level to get together to discuss data, discuss assessments, discuss and plan as a team to ensure that students are having similar classroom and classroom experiences within their schools, as well as across the elementary schools. During these professional development times, Hauser Junior High has had time to work as an entire school to have cross-grade level, cross-curricular topics, cross-curricular subjects to collaborate on areas of need that are specific to the junior high. We continue to refine the professional development that's offered. We are, as administrative team, we started talking about looking at professional development for next year, and what's the plan and the vision for the district and the need of the teachers. We'll start to have, we'll continue to have those conversations with the staff members as well, so that we are working to best utilize this wonderful time period that we do have, that we're able to work together as a group. Some of the initial feedback from teachers has been that these meetings have been positive and have provided more time to learn from colleagues, so we want to continue to build and grow on that feedback as well.
And we already ran through these financial projections that were attachments here at the end, right? That really takes us to the end of our goal areas. Any questions?
No, but I appreciate having this goal update. I think if, you know, we create the goals in the beginning, and, you know, last few years, we haven't done really a check-in, so I think this is very helpful, and I think if a community member wants to check into one board meeting, this might be a good one to give, you know, kind of the highlights of everything, so...
Yeah, I agree. This is very helpful, I get, like, everything at once, but at the same time, thinking like, where can we break this down into a little bit more detail, like, throughout the year? But probably, I mean, my initial gut thought right now is like, having this at this point in time is probably helpful. Just like, here's the quick recap of everything.
Yep. Great, no, I think it's something, I agree, it was, I think, helpful for our team to, to have the conversation, put the goals, you know, kind of right back in front of us, and then talk about really where are we in terms of our progress. So I think we're definitely progressing. I think the goals are the right goals, too, you know, I mean, this is, this is the work we're working on.
Especially since we're at the end of the five-year, and we're thinking over the summer, this gives us a couple of months to kind of plan, what do we want to talk about in the summer, what additional detail do we need? So, yeah, and good presentations, too, well put together.
You were right. You were right, 8:13.
All right. So next, we have the education committee.
I think we've embedded them all in.
We've embedded them all in, okay.
Yeah, if you want to go to the workday, we can talk about that.
No, I guess you put that in there as sort of a reference point around the Hauser later start time.
Gotcha, so I didn't know if you wanted to discuss any of the particulars, but like, how many...
No, I think we, I think we had a good conversation about the Hauser...
I understand, yeah, it's up to the teachers and them to kind of figure out what they need, but...
Yeah, the other attachments I had put in there were really reference points for the goal conversation that we just had.
Okay. So I don't believe we heard anything from the policy committee.
We've heard enough from the policy committee.
There you go, safe talkers.
But we're going to have a couple more.